All right, there we are. Seven o'clock. Call me in to order. First item of business for quick. Scott Sikowski, correct? Is up for a vac-- to fill a vacancy in for the ZBA. Kent Lawrence. There's a letter to Kent from Scott to fill the position. Scott, is there anything you'd like to tell us about your interest in the ZBA?
No, I'm happy to answer your question.
Have you served on any of the zoning and planning boards before?
Yeah, I did also on Congress and a board of four here for three or four years. I'm a motion type. But I also served at the, as a law clerk for the National Superior Court in Chicago County. If I'm not, it's something where--
When do you move to town?
May of two years ago, May.
Okay, great. Other questions for Scott?
Nope.
I'm just glad we have people to fill the, fill the positions. I'll make a motion to accept the nomination for Scott Sikowski as the alternate for our zoning ZBA. Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay, Scott, you are all set?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. So, um, first up, Chief, you had item on the highway grant?
Yes, this is the grant that was approved back in the November meeting for three new radivers to replace the existing, that is, cruises that are 20 years old. This is, this needs to be signed by the chair. You've noticed a section for it to be motorized, but it's not actually motorized for the discharges. Basically, units, they're a little bit lower than the first COVID at even November meeting. For a total of $6,093 is a 75% match, highway safety was. Where we have to match $2,300 a month. So basically, it comes down to $2,708 per unit, which comes out with a total of $8,124. And basically, once this is signed, it gets sent back and then arrangements for the equipment through the pass, which is the actual rate.
Okay. Any questions about the grant agreement?
So you're gonna get three numbers?
Three numbers, yes.
Are you gonna transfer one to the old crews or are you just gonna--
Well, we got one, one with the new cruiser.
Okay.
So these three are going in three markets?
In one, two, and three.
Uh, one, two, and three, yes. And the four cars--
The black ones.
What's that, yes.
Any other questions?
Sorry, I was raised. It said the original was 66 and now it's--
The original was 2850 per unit. They came a little lower. Basically, that first call was included with the installation. But we learned that highway safety does not pay for the installation of the radars and the cruises, so that's something that we might have to take out of our operating question. This is not paid.
No, I was just wondering, on the front page, it said the, the award amount is amended.
Well, the award amount is amended basically at what we just received with the National Highway Safety Grants for the traffic grants. And basically, the unit over $10,000 has to go to the Attorney General's Office, he signed off on it, the laser companies aren't a big deal. So basically, we were awarded about $6,600 in traffic grants for the year 2022, 2023, but this course is over, which is up to $12,693. So that's--
Does that number have to go to council as well under the approvals of council?
Yes, it does.
Any other questions? I'll make a motion to accept the amendment notice for the intermodal units.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
You need me on sub recipient one?
Yes.
On the left?
Yes.
Anybody just have initials on page two or--
Yep. Today is the-- Need you all for your initial?
I don't think so. It probably occurred, but I don't--
All right, next up, let's delve into-- No, no, that's-- We'll delve into emergency management. Let's talk about emergency management processes. Situation Ohio, Poby, you wanna, you asked to have this on your agenda, you wanna--
Yes, Tom's obviously maybe late if he's in the manager. So I guess, like you said, Jeff, previous discussions, we had, you never, you could never really compare to something like Palestine that transpired. So my general question is, where are we at? Where do we need to be? And what can we do to mitigate and recruit the threat of this risk cost? Can't buy me this question.
Well, you know, we're also lucky enough in this area to have some great resources. Okay, we have P's, it's very close to us. Oh, we have P's, we have more spaces, very close to us, very, it's mutually aligned on this. We also have the shipyard, which is mutually aligned with us, that, you know, that, probably a little bit more first, these lives, this potential large scale incidents, you know, the major plane crashes or like that, or maybe major thing over-- The shipyard, you know, it's got to compare with all the trains. I mean, we have a lot of resources, we have contact and all these resources, you know, we have C-Coach Chiefs, which is a, is a giant resource for mutual aid information, our resources. You know, we also, you know, we have a lot of mutual aid to commit to help in a situation like that, you know. To be prepared for that, one hundred percent, it's impossible to, you know. Yes, you know, other, other areas of the country got problems with this stuff? I mean, we all, you know, talked about, you know, you know, building up, building up very much, debriefing, that's something that gets out of control. Is it being disseminated throughout? Will you be able to get an after action or a version of it?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. And, you know, we can look at that and where, are we capable over here in Donovan Field, Campbell, and something like that? Absolutely. Am I confident that we can get the resources here and show up a lot of time? Absolutely, absolutely.
Is there--
Oh, correct.
Is there, we have an evacuation plan for Seabrook? Do we have, what do we have announced today before we can vent such a day in town? Wait, I'm asking.
I don't, we've been using that plan, you know, we've used that plan for years. You know, I know we can, we can block out one section of town very quickly, you know, on the main, in Donovan Field, on the railroad. As soon as it's in, you can just evacuate all down. And last, we need to attend to our evacuation rumors, or contingency plans, more so for evacuation in a situation like that, or more publicized--
Tom, let's speak a little bit on that, sorry. You know, again, we got an evacuation plan involved, that's how the act of the situation is. So we get, we do, do we not, Tom, I think this may be in your wheelhouse, we get a ton of chemicals coming through town. And we have some pretty long, hundred car train discovered in the middle.
You'd be surprised what it's all--
Yeah. The same stuff that was just occurring in Mid-Ohio, got discovered in this town on a daily basis sometimes.
So the town, we have a emergency plan for the new fields, we put together a physical that mirrors the Seabrook plan--
As far as evacuation route?
As far as evacuation route. So without depending on where it ends and what happened, and going to the chemical book to see how far away we got from back there, I mean, this is tough. But we'll get, we'll get a lot of people unless in here to figure that out before we do.
What's the communication plan to get the word disseminated in town? So it's a big smoke cloud, people go, I gotta run. How do we handle something like that as far as something posted online? I mean, is that in the process? Is that in the works? Or is that in the wheelhouse?
Well, we would activate our real scene, that gets saved, well. We have ability to use the sirens if we have to. You know, it's just, it's just a matter of getting where we should do it.
But when we have that, we should have, tell them what.
Yeah. Say again, Tom.
We need to use the sirens, we need to tell them what. As far as fire alarm, we can't use, we have one total set of sirens fire alarm that we can use.
Do you think there needs to be more information disseminating, people such as if we use the sirens, maybe the sirens goes off, that's what that's for? And it's in the middle of the night, you hear the sirens, you go, no, it's a fire. You know, you're not gonna hear, may or may not be cocked, it's a, a rail, it can spill or fire or whatever down at our end if it happens, up here or vice versa.
That's also capable of the PA system also, so you can, you can broadcast it. That's, that's a plus. The way that our plan to set up, the radio station to the area, we don't fight, and whatever, from social media that was passed--
Do you think we need to disseminate to the community in greater detail? Notification formats, or how people are gonna be notified? Or, but, you know, if you hear the sirens, you can, this noise is, just because they're seeing item and knowledge of what, if it transpired and you use the sirens and PA stuff down at the other end in winter time, doors all shut, everything buttoned up, they're not gonna hear it. So maybe you say, hey folks, cause you know, when Seabrook sends their month, or their annual mail route with your evacuation route, and it's all charted out, it pretty much gives you an idea. But if you're in the middle of the night, and people just, I guess, how do we get the information to people on how we're gonna execute this plan and how they should respond? Because I wager, everybody sitting here knows how it's gonna work, but a majority of the people, I could be wrong in town, they're not gonna be cocked of, oh, it just hit the fan, what do we do? Does that make sense?
I guess we're gonna find we're gonna end up with, you call these, like, fire departments, in that case, in police departments, and you will do it in the door, what happened will do in the door.
If that's viable, with a chemical issue, you know.
Another thing, oh, the state has the reverse number one, where we could make massive calls for--
Okay.
Presidents, someone's--
Sounds like you guys got it under control, it's planned out, I just don't know if there's knowledge in the community about this, and my, my question is, do we need to both sort of educating the community in town on how we respond to that situation?
One thing, Poby, you know, it all boils down to, you know, like, this, this would be, this kind of goes with, Poby, with the Seabrook girl, okay? Most, most people get those brochures of, in Seabrook, informally.
Ours is hanging in the kitchen.
Yeah, in the third second. You know, so, I think Chief has the right, you have the ability for reverse number one, okay? The social media, the media, there'd be, there'd be a media officer assigned, okay? Once, I would assume the state, you'll see evacuated, state evacuated, you'll see a contingency virus, they assign a media officer. So there's also some different ways to communicate with people based on what we do in Seabrook.
Is there a protocol for handicapped and seniors?
Yes.
And daycares and schools?
I mean, I know this, I'm sure this has been addressed, but again, my issue is communication knowledge within the community of how, what is the appropriate report, should such a event transpire. And if we can make sure that everybody, you could, you know, you lead the horse to water, you can't make a trip, but if we get the information disseminated, and hopefully people will go, oh, that's in this tour here in the kitchen, maybe I should take a look at it. Especially if we can piggyback on this Palestine issue and go, hey, here's your content, here's an issue, and here's how we're prepared, and demonstrate all the work you guys have done and all the resources that we have, to show that we're not sitting around just being reactive with the pro act and since you've come. So that's just my concern on this, and that the community knows that you guys have done your homework, and you got your docs up well, and did your work, and you're ready, we're going to go on. Does that make sense?
What does, what is the process to do reverse number one? Is, I think, just for approval at the state level? How many levels?
You can directly request it, myself, or--
Yeah. Just make the simple request to the state?
Is it done on the Congress?
With the state, state leave. And once you made that request, I assume it gets acted on within--
It's free world.
Yeah.
And it's not wrong to bear to stop too much.
Sure, does it cover cell phones, sorry?
With us, yes.
You also do emergency access to, you know, radios, TVs--
Right, that almost, that guy will get kicked, I assume, at the same time.
Or do you stretch it out beyond the area to like maximum distance?
I would assume depending upon the rationale for the call would determine the straight or-- the extent of--
Yeah. People, people probably get it, they'll be, it's better than, you know, it's better than--
Too many is better than two few.
It's gotta be a goal, I think, there's no doubt about it, it's, you know, there's people that just don't pay attention to any of that stuff, one percent. And, you know, it'd be, it'd be, it'd be a huge undertaking. Do we have a need for additional education in the community on this?
Well, I think, I think they're very, very good point, I think we all sit down, get together, and we'll general write up on this, and, you know, it could be sent out, it could be posted, you know, we currently post on the town website, you know, it's--
That's probably just media.
You know, that's, you know, our responsibility to do that, you know, we don't know who's gonna read it, who's gonna qualify it, who's gonna do it, but at least it's there, take a word or, you know, a brief, you know, a brief write-up of, you know, instead of sending the whole thing out, you know, it's confusing to us sometimes, so.
No, I, I mean, I would think it's something that's focused around, if you hear or see this, these are the things that you need to do. And again, you don't wanna make it too complex, nineteen pages, right? It's more of, if you see X and Y, or B or X and Y, you need to evacuate to, what's, our town's Manchester, right? In terms of--
For Seabrook incident, something like this, we probably, we probably have to have a different plan, somewhere else as well, because they're not got any section center names yet for an incident.
Is that something we need to explore further?
Probably something, yeah.
Probably get the railroad company, pay for it ahead of time.
Sorry, I'm a little late, but I bet you, they'd be willing to pay for it right now.
Well, at least they, make the commitment to pay for it, right?
So was it ten years ago, Jeff, we went to Fort Worth? We talked about, I believe, the propane tankers coming through--
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was, we had several meetings in New England talking about propane tankers--
Can you expand on that, Jeff?
Well, basically, what they, 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 they're expanding their facility, C-crew's expanding their facility, and they were gonna want to push that to Seabrook, bringing the propane tankers to downtown Fort Worth, which is how they got there. You know, and they have, over C3, they have, they have a fire suppression system, they have armed guards, okay? But, you know, Jeff and I were talking about, most of those, those tankers parked in, you're talking in junction--
Yeah, I was gonna say, they sit, they sit on the railroad track at night all the time.
No water, okay, no armed guards, you know, so that's, that's probably our biggest risk.
It's something going wrong while those are parked here. As opposed to, I mean, trust me, I get it, trains, lots of mass, even at low speed, you have incredible momentum. It, it's, the railroad, deep railway probably is lesser risk than an accident while these things are parked here, given the amount of time that they are, they're literally sitting here for hours, if not days, correct?
Days, yeah.
I mean, that's, to me, that's the, that's the, that's the biggest potential problem that we face, as opposed to, you know, a, a moving target, so to speak, which is coming through, and it's through town in the span of ten minutes, tops, right?
Right, right. And I was glad to hear, Poby, you mentioned that you've been talking to CSX, and CSX is, is spending a lot of money cleaning up Canyon's mess that they love.
I'm gonna jump in on that if I may. So they cleaned up from probably seventy-five yards north of the eighty-five Overpass, all the way down to the Exeter Mine, they've got all the old tires out. Cause I was at a time when Michael took grease, a company, and he looked at it, and a friend of mine observed the rails the other day, and everything's all cleaned up, all those huge piles we had, which was, how many fires have you guys had? There was a couple anyway, where they had tires--
Yeah, that's a, that's a good one, so.
Yeah, so they've done a good job, and they've been a good neighbor on that, so, so hats off the Seabrook. They still got all the steel on that, I was told.
Steel doesn't work.
Sorry?
Steel doesn't work.
If the steel's burned, we're in trouble.
Yeah.
So they are, there is talks about their C3, there's talk, in talks, right, about LNG.
Yeah.
So what C3 is, you know, they wanted to increase this because, you know, at times with the LGG here in the States was, was, they're getting the lower rates, if they can export it, they make money, and that's what they're doing all this, and now they're talking about LNG too, so that's something that comes to it. You know, the propane is, is just as dangerous, I mean, my, my, is, is one thing, is, you know, it's gonna smell to it. So that's something that's potential coming up in a few, you know, that's a few years of, you know, putting the facility in a little bit. They have it in there now, but it's very small, but it'll, you know, expand, and trucks on the rest of the country, and load up the ships and sell to Europe, okay?
Unless it's propane, I would assume, it's not over by Seabrook. It's not over--
Oh, it has to be, you know, like, they had that a few years ago, they made--
It has to be--
All the cars--
All the cars have to be over reds.
Okay. You never change the little cars?
No. But again, you know, this, I just, we have capacity right now, I think it's twenty-six, twenty-seven, maybe twenty-seven floating propane tanks down there inside. That's energy, so right there.
Twenty thousand gallons each?
Sixty.
Sixty each then? Okay.
All propane.
Three thousand gallons to go.
And we've, we've had the railroads?
Oh, I don't doubt, I don't doubt.
You had a deviation rule, that was probably about fifteen, eighteen years ago.
Well, unfortunately, the railroad, when we had this gassing, the aviation hour, they just blew off the power there, and we did that, the next train came through, you know, just engineers, you know, what we're gonna do is, no, I can't, it's just a ship, okay? So they, they were having it possible, so, you know, Jeff, in his position, he can, he can start the wheel, he's one of the people, Jeff Train. And then Jeff Train, it gets their attention, they look back.
I'm sure.
Quite some time, right?
A few hours, it's, it's--
Once you shut, you usually shut the tracks down.
How many feet, what, five, six, we agree with mine?
Well, when you shut the tracks down here, my guess is it has ripple effects up and down their entire transportation quarter, where train won't leave, you know, New York, if its cargo's destined to Maine, knowing the track is shut down.
And they--
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's prior down track, okay? Yeah, that would have a more idea of track.
Yeah.
Part of the Northeastern.
So I guess my last question would be, how do we charter, who's gonna take the helm coming together, coming out with the information dissemination?
What, what do you think we should talk about the state?
Yeah, I talked to the state today, to follow, put that in their new operation plan, somehow get to town to, uh, mail it?
Town website--
What's it?
Mail is progress. Is that in your wheelhouse, Tom? Is that in your wheelhouse?
You can move on. Put it on, you know, there, yeah.
We'll get it. I don't have anything else. Thank you. Long as you know one tomorrow. Sir, the longest you know one tomorrow.
Just a little, it, it says, to make public that, um, the owner of the power plant, Seabrook in Florida, their plan is to get rid of the sirens, tell them, and have them decide in the next few months.
Florida Department, of course, yeah. Florida Department, like, nothing--
Yeah, they, they tried, they wanted to do it in that, to all the country, they wanna, they wanna take it all down, so that way, that way you go all the way.
What's the state's, the town?
Nothing's been said.
Yeah, they heard you were gonna walk, and then you missed out.
If the, if the talents take it over.
But they shouldn't be, it's all nonsense, I don't think.
Does the state support that idea? What's the state's position on that?
They don't want it.
They want the sirens to abandon it.
And actually, under, under, my guess is under federal power act, even, that gives states jurisdiction of a generation, then they're gonna have a real hard time if the state wants them to keep it, the state not being able to force them to keep it, but that's just a opinion.
We get a question from the bank.
Well, and, before I go, Jeff, you want something? Yeah.
Can we, if we have enough time in twenty-nine, the election, to put something together, set something that's gonna be able to disseminate after that time?
No, that's, no, it's clear enough that we couldn't get the state, we couldn't get the state to move that quick, for one thing.
Well, just update what we currently have, we're saying, as we're at right now, we're updating the state, we're gonna gather it.
You're talking about an emergency plan, have like the, like whatever mail they're thinking about before the elections, so that we can distribute it at that time too? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
So not about the sirens, but--
We have, we have to get, that's what, it's way--
All right, it's already, what, twenty-second, twenty-third? Yeah, I, I think, I think the key factor to that would be really getting the information from the state as to, you know, what, these guys being able to communicate to the state, get the information, and putting it together, so, probably a worthy goal, but I'm not sure if we'll be able to do it.
The state actually has supplies, it's, I, I was looking at it, I just see they had, you know, you know, the trains, you know, train emergencies, but I didn't see any in the near future. That doesn't mean, you know, one lane out popped up.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, these, as, these Palestine just took place only a couple weeks ago, it wouldn't surprise me if sometime in the next month or so, somebody in the state said--
They, they had a panel last year, I just--
Oh, did it?
Yeah, they had, some sort of thing last year, and I think a couple times, yeah, two, I just had anything seen, and it was scheduled, but I'm sure, you know, one thing's up, we can let you guys know if you guys have any notice.
If I can't, just a quick question about the LNG out of, out of Fort Worth, my C2, are they looking to import, do an import terminal? Given the problems at Mystic and with the Boston Everett terminal maybe going away, are they looking to install an import terminal here, or are they looking to do export?
I think you would see it's the same thing as the propane, it's, it's, well, see, they will transfer, they, they swap back and forth on the propane, and, you know, where, where the prices, what are just, maybe bringing them in hot a little bit, or maybe bringing them, you know, air and throttle, or something.
I, I, I mean, given the size and scope of an export terminal though, and the LNG transport, that, that surprises me, cause I don't know where the hell they order. Imports doesn't surprise me, because, you know, gas, offshore acidification is easy to bring into the pipe, and them having a gateway, you know, in Portsmouth where the pipelines are coming out from Maine, pipelines coming out from people. I was just curious if they, if, either way--
Cause they say it's just hard.
Yeah.
Does Port Worth have the LNG, do you have the ability to load tankers offshore?
LNG? No. The LNG terminals in, in New England are the Everett facility, in, at Mystic, in, in Boston, there's a Canada port, which is in St. John, which goes into the Maritimes pipe, down through Maine, and through here. And then there's one offshore of Gloucester, which is an offshore terminal, it doesn't get used much. Most of, most of all the LNG imports are really Everett first, and then Canada port. Almost nothing gets down to Gloucester. But there's a growing need for it, and my guess is that's why they're looking at it. Especially if Mystic shuts down, because the Mystic LNG is really dedicated-- Especially if Mystic shuts down, because the Mystic LNG is really dedicated to the generation facility there, and that generation facility may be closing in the next couple of years, and if so, the LNG, um, import piece to that will probably go away, which opens it forward for somebody else to, to do what Mystic does for the majority. All right? Any other questions about this aspect?
Thank you for your knowledge and your time, gentlemen.
From this, why don't we roll into the discussion about safety complex? At our last meeting, um, we, uh, we had a brief discussion about the potential, you know, for safety complex and planning for that. We thought it would be appropriate, um, to have that in a public discussion, um, which I appreciate Chief Young, Chief Foxon, these employees coming in, and obviously, you gentlemen, as emergency management, will probably be interested in this discussion as well. Jackie, this was an issue that I think you are concerned about, do you wanna open up the discussion?
Um, I'm just interested in hearing long-term planning for police and fire going forward. I think we're getting to a place where we need to have some updates to our fire and police department to modernize it a bit. So I'd like to hear the thoughts of our chiefs. What their, what your thoughts are.
And I'll refer this to Chief Foxon, because he knows the history of this being a topic in the past, for the top decade, so I will refer again, and then I can speak, put my two cents in, like I said, I've been here fourteen months, so I'm learning, I know.
Thanks.
That was good, love that.
No, as I mentioned, you know, we, we, these discussions with Tom's been positive to have come up for twenty-five or thirty years. And, you know, it's, 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 it's great to see it kind of come up again, but I think the town should come up with some type of plan, if, if, if that's what they, the route they wanna take. You know, as I, they mentioned before, it's gonna be very expensive, I would think, the town probably will just expenditure, perhaps since water and sewage, but, you know, that would be to the town. You know, there, there are some deficiencies in the fire sta, fire stations now, we have a deficiency with fire department, lack of personnel, I don't see that getting any better. So, you know, that's another thing the town's gonna have to look at in the next, next several years. I would say as much as, you know, maybe as early as three or five years from now, you know, they don't know, unless things drastically change with, um, membership of the department. We're all very old, as you can see, you know, and, uh, we can only do it so much longer. But, you know, I think it's, it, when we were looking into and trying to put together a plan of, you know, what's needed, I was looking at my notes that I had back from about, you know, ten, ten, eleven years ago, the last time this came up, about space we needed for fire, combined space, you know, meaning combined space would be EOC, uh, emergency operations, police areas that we could, we could combine, you know, and use as, you know, everybody can use it, so I was like, gee, have a big training room, why don't we have one big training room, either the block can use it, stuff like that. You, you know, you're probably looking at, you know, you're looking at about eleven thousand square feet, you know, of space, just, I'm just talking about five combined space, I have no idea what PD would need the space.
What do you have right now?
What do I have right now? About forty-two hundred square feet.
So where do you get the eleven thousand?
Just to go, you know, build a station, you know, for five years, you're gonna build for the next hundred years.
Right, so what?
So, I mean, basically, apparatus, you, you're talking six thousand square feet right now, we're, we're just, we're just about at thirty-two hundred square feet, or we're just, you know, we're tight, we don't need any of the setbacks, we don't need any codes, we don't have ventilation, we don't have separation, uh, of gear from the apparatus today, we don't have, you know, uh, storage, you know, so.
I'm just trying to like.
Coming up, just coming up with the size of apparatus, four bay, you know, four bay garage, you know.
Drive through.
Ideally, but again, that would have to fit, you know, what he's brought, the drive-through, I think he'd be a driver, he'd be the way to do it.
Would it be similar in size to like the Stratton Fire Department, if I'm just kind of thinking about a visual, like?
Uh, Stratton Fire, I believe, is twenty-six thousand square feet, so it's, it'd be small, and it would be, I mean, as I get, I don't know how much space the chief would need, I don't know what he's gonna look at, show you, have some garage space for persons and stuff like that. But would that, you know, be a, a, too lively a space for, for us right now? Yeah, I don't know if it's not gonna be fifty years, you know, you didn't want, you wouldn't want, you know, be jumping on it and reacting to it like that. That would give us four bays, you know, with room to work, with room to walk beside the trucks, um, behind it and in front of it. You know, we have three, we have about three days now that will get us in a position where we're firing trucks behind each other, so, you know, if you get the situation, if a front truck, if our vehicle doesn't stop, then you give it another vehicle, you know, behind it.
Would your driver solve that problem?
Right. Would give us some storage, you know, we do have, uh, we do have some, um, some storage issues, we have a lighting unit, a storage pad under cover outside, we have, um, some nice signposts that are not being stored, you know, um, in, in town, Rob, we have a fire room. I'm both staying inside, because it needs.
Yeah.
But, um, and we thought about, believe it or not, Christmas, day before Christmas, we had that photo, I was out there, and I want to tell you, it was whole. It was true.
I'm sure.
We rescued, you saw it, right, two fire planes.
Yeah.
And, you know, we have, we have a fire truck at town office and speed, so, you know, in some of these private projects, so, nothing, not long enough, it'd be nice to go get that back.
That's a, the AT point.
Yes, that's the first one, done. So, you know, that's, um, again, this is just all preliminary stuff, looking at, looking at what we looked at ten years ago, but I think, you know, it really has to be a, you know, a long thought of, and, I mean, it's something that, you know, it's a, you know, can be a lot of money, you know, there's a lot of money out there that we add, but once you do that, and take a test of that, once you get, bring the sovereign government money in on it, then the cost goes to skyrocket, because they're gonna make you have, you know, maybe we would put in a twelve point fifteen workout room, they're gonna make you have a twelve point fifteen, you know, you're gonna have to have this, you're gonna have to all, all kind of design, so.
And have you talked at all with Newmarket about contracting with their fire department and what that would cost the town?
I have not, because Newmarket's not in much better shape than we are right now, so.
They are not?
No. So, Newmarket's right now on the verge of having a deciding on the, they're gonna hire more full-timers, because Newmarket only has two full-timers.
Right.
That they're relying on, all the time, you know what their budget is?
Excuse me?
You know what Newmarket's budget is, they change? Four hundred and eighty thousand. Just on the fire.
Give it two full-timers.
Only four.
Yeah. And they just have the one station, correct? They don't have a, they don't have a, like?
No, they have one station.
Yeah, no substation. Yeah.
Excuse me? Yeah, and they, they actually, finally, when they got that, twenty, thirteen years ago, they just got the money to finish the top, to be able to put some, you know, some bunkers in. So they're, they're, I would guess, over the next couple of years, you see a, um, another surge in Newmarket for full-timers.
For full-timers?
Because they're not getting, they're missing.
It's a Disney.
It is very, very, they would notice all, it's great. They're, they're probably missing, they're probably bringing in, at least, upwards of ten times a week.
No.
To cover it, to cover your costs, where they have one or two buses.
Two.
Two. And they're in the fire station.
What size footprint, Jeff, what do you think would be ideal for a new fire station acre west, land west?
Um, well, that's, that's hard to say, because I've seen them rise on point two-six or eight, so.
It's pretty tidy, it's, it's very tidy, yeah, you know, it's, it's tight, oh, yeah. You know, two, three acres, they, things can be designed to fit, you know, it, it's more or less how wide, you know, really how wide the road is, if you, you know, maybe five acres, sixty feet wide, or something like that, or.
Trust no turn.
No. I would say a minimum of two and a half to three would give you that. And then again, it would all depend on what the, the shape of it would be, and then again, how much space we can, PD's gonna need. But, uh, to your answer, to your answer, I mean, we were talking earlier about where, where I see the fire department going, I see the fire department gonna have to either look at, at possibly contracting, which I don't think we're, uh, because if you contract this, these, these guys are still gonna get their own calls for us, or hiring full-time for us, well.
Right, so it seems like there's going to be large expenditures either way, and we just need to decide which way.
I think it's coming, I don't know, I can't tell you when, but I, I just, that won't come.
And if you contract, that's gonna reduce the amount of footprint you need in town.
That would absolutely.
So that would impact on which direction you're gonna move on this.
Right. But you gotta figure out how that contract's gonna work, you know, you gotta.
And if it's gonna work.
Right. You know, you have somebody coming from Exeter, Exeter, seven people, I'll do, you think, except, uh, on duty, but, you know, Exeter's very busy with fire, so that's gonna say, Exeter's gonna say, okay, yeah, if you contract, we'll be able to hire, you know, two or three new firefighters, so we're gonna get in touch.
Perk, we, our, this was discussed a few years ago with, like, the towns in Raleigh all began to agree on, they were gonna build one fire station, and it came down to, it just didn't work, you know?
Is that?
Didn't work because the towns couldn't come to an agreement as to how to operate, or did work just because dollars and cents, not really much of?
Power thing, Brian.
Dollars and cents too, I mean, you're talking to the response times, you know, you're talking, you know, if it's a big town, um.
Well, that opens up, so, let's assume for a moment, we contract that, it ends up changing our response times, correct? Because I'm assuming that if we do that, we no longer have a fire station here, or is Exeter gonna take it over and use it as, I would assume not.
You would no longer have.
Right, because it, that cost wise, then it doesn't make sense, because we'd be paying just as much to, through Exeter, to have our own department. So, does it, what does a change in response time do, let's say, for everybody's insurance in town? I know it goes out, but anybody have any idea? What's that? On the response time? Yeah, and, and, and that's my question, which is, your insurance company says, okay, your response time now for, is, in your town is, I'm sure it gets a rating change, right? Anybody know? I, I don't have any insurance.
Yeah, I don't either. I, I know, I don't know.
No, no, that's fine.
By far, every, every ISO point is upwards of ten percent.
Ten percent of your homeowners insurance?
Yeah.
Well, it's eleven.
What's the response time now, do you know?
The last time, last, our last ISO rating, which was on six years ago, I had a response time of six minutes.
Do you know, or can you cite a reference where contracting's working, and, or has worked?
I don't know, I don't know what contracting means in the state of the nation. I do know of something, quite, quite, quite a lot, and actually, I cited the main, the contractor that was in town, oh, Exeter, Exeter, Corina, serves Exeter, and they have, like, it's, it's seven, five, eight thousand, all the way, but it's, again, it's, they're gonna get there when they get there, and their response time up there is probably upwards of thirty minutes. You know, I, I do know that a few years ago, I was asked to, at Exeter, send us a proposal for annuals, and I consider it now, it was about ninety-four thousand dollars a year more than what we paid in early, right now.
With Newmark?
With Newmark.
Or what are we paying, is that sixty to Newmark?
Newmark now, our annuals are big. Forty-eight dollars.
Yes, like five, five.
So, I would say to, yeah.
Let's hope, let's hope the town manager, who might be, is not watching right now, or thinks so.
That is an absolute liar, yeah.
Don't disagree.
Absolutely, I'm gonna make a money from the calls, yeah. No, I'm gonna say I'm right.
Of course. All right, bill on the insurance, everything.
Didn't, I believe Newcastle went through this whole process and explored contracting towards a new construction, they came to the conclusion that financially and, and by the.
Newcastle? Oh, interesting. Do you know how long ago?
They do have the annuals, not a question.
The annuals, right.
Not the fire department.
Right, right.
It was not viable, actually. So that, so that kind of backs us down, we either, we pre-serve maybe, solve the problem, or we could go on full-time, first time.
Yeah.
That's the corner we had to pay it in time. So contracting, basically, not viable.
Hope enough, we remember that happen.
Do I stay for it?
Well, you know, if you can just get some people that, it's gonna be, it takes us, give us another ten people, we'll be a little bit changed, give us another twenty people, we'll be a little bit changed.
Well, you should.
My concern is, we had this conversation last spring. And it was, and that was the purpose of the paper call, is to see if we could get it all up, and nobody took you up on it. So it's, it feels as though we, like, something's gotta change, and we just have to.
Yeah, I think the town has to play a role, I mean, it's just, the town has to play a role, it's gonna, it's gonna need to change, you know, does it have to change today? No?
See, in the question, they called the fire department, it was, time is of the essence, you know, where the house burned down, what was the sum of dying in the house? You just can't wait for them to, you just can't do it. You gotta work around that already, you gotta figure, throw all the money in.
Well, and to your point, Tom, right, it, it's, it is a level of service, a level of expectation of the people in town in terms of the response time. And, you know, it's not, it's not always a lot of discussion about it, and people probably don't think about it unless, of course, you know, you make the call, but when you do make the call, that's when the level of expectation is.
Weird.
Yeah. And so, I, I don't disagree, I, I know that there was a lot of discussion, ten years ago, maybe, uh, when a member of the select board even made the suggestion of looking at contracting police services. And that was a very controversial, highly controversial issue. I'm not saying that's not worth looking at, I, let's, let's be clear, all options are on the table, and everything should be looked at. But it's, it's really hard to get over that issue. Right? Even, even if it might be more cost-effective, if you're sacrificing an expectation of response time, it may not be acceptable, no matter how much you're saying. So, you know, and then this rolls to, to the issue as, as Jeff mentioned, which is, everything's gonna change, certainly on the fire's gonna change, it's a question of what are the answers, and how quickly can we come up with solutions, and what are we doing in the interim? I think right now, we're kind of stepping into the interim, right? Where we, that's where we're at right now.
Do you have any idea for if, um, so you said with Newmarket, they've got two full-timers, and they're about four hundred, four fifty?
I think they're about four eighty.
Four eighty? Is, do you see kind of, kind of our department being similar to that in terms of expenditures? If we ended up hiring to full-timers, like, is that kind of what we're looking at? Right now, we're at like one seventy.
I think with, with benefits, blah, blah, I'm gonna come to the ball, let's say, two fire planes are gonna cost you between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Each, or?
Each. No, 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 combined, you know, beginning. The, the problem, again, with town roofills is, is if you're not, you know, they're gonna be bored, okay? How many calls do you get? I'd average about two sixty, two seventy, you know, and, you know, the majority are all right, not rushing the house, but they can go up and down, you know, sometimes they go two weeks or a column, you know, twelve thousand, you know, but, um, you know, the, as, as. Sometimes they go two weeks or a column, you know, twelve thousand, you know, but, um, you know, the, as, as, as houses get built, all that, you know, increases. But, you know, trying to keep them, you know, again, you can hire them, trying to keep them, you know, Newmarket has a second, so. You know, they, they rolled through, well, they probably had to put ten, ten to fifteen guys in the past ten years.
I, I mean, we won't be the same thing.
We would be the same thing.
Okay.
So. You know, straws.
It won't, except, I mean, that, that's something, well, again, if, if, and when we get to that point, we should all get comfortable with the idea that we'll be lucky if somebody hangs around for a year or two. That's just gonna be the new one.
Again, that, that deal of fire, fire, I mean, everybody was in that jail, that.
Yes.
It's, you know, used to be, everybody wanted to come, come in and be a fighter, cause they had free retirement program, okay? Now they've scaled back a little bit, it's not, you know, you're not getting, you know, retirement. With eighty-five, ninety, seventy, about twenty years, you know, maybe a twenty-five, thirty, so, it is, you know, even a full time fighter, having a hard time.
What's your guts say?
Excuse me?
What does your guts say? Like, have you been doing this for so long, like?
It's a tough answer, because I was hoping we'd never get that in town, because we, you know, we started, we had six hundred people in this town, we had thirty of them, yes. So now we have, what's up, what are we?
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred people and we have twelve of them, what's wrong? Right, what's wrong? Now, part of that, okay, is the state and insurance companies and, I believe, the unions out there, because, you know, they, they, they make you go through all this training and everything like that, you should be able to have a guy in a fire department, but all I want is to run the truck. I don't wanna, I'm never going to wear this, it's all over the truck, you can't do it. You can have it happen, but he's gotta take all the same classes, you know, so, you can't just have, I can't say, you know, you wanna come down, help us roll balls. You can't do it, you gotta get a firefighter, work certain, you know, pretty much.
Yeah.
Afternoon.
And that's state law or federal?
It's a combination, both, I think it's. Three, four moves. Yeah, well, yeah, and I was saying, a lot of people, we have a lot of inquiries, I really like to run the rescue, okay? Is your, your EMT program, which is, you have your eighty hours, uh, you're gonna have to do ten minutes, twelve hours, ten days, education, month and a half, after that, so.
What's stratum option, did you guys look at contracting with them?
Stratum?
Yeah.
No, they, they just, they just sat by it, full time right now, they don't have full timers, they have per diems. So you never know, it's gonna be on duty over there.
So they didn't have full time?
They, they got, they got the okay to hire a few years ago, but I don't know what step, why they didn't do it, they just, they, they do.
Oh, I thought they went to full time when they built the complex. Oh, wait a second, okay.
Three or, or shit.
So they're doing like a, but every town is fighting.
Yeah, but they're doing just full time, they're paying actually full time.
Yeah, they're, they're, still a whole state issue, but.
In responses, you know, we live in, we live in stratum, man.
Yeah, I've seen stratum, big towns.
Big town, and the response to stratum is challenging, a little.
I was just thinking the proximity, if that.
Yep, yeah, you know, I, well, you know, one of our options would be, you know, if we were to go there, would be a stratum, because the location's. You know, Exodus, Exodus is fast, but Exodus is very busy too. So you're, as you say, you're always gonna be on the back wheel, like, we came this one time, sorry, two thousand one hour, you know, that stratum is very busy. Newmarket is extremely busy.
Yeah.
But that's the cost. Effing is evident, they work that.
I, I don't, I don't see any answer coming out of Effing, right?
Effing, Effing has their own, Effing has just exploded and not, the same with their infrastructure, they could.
Yes, Effing is in a, in a situation of catch up on a lot of levels right now.
So what do you need from the board to start thinking about it?
Thinking about it.
Just, just nine eleven, Bill reserve working on the C I P.
Yeah, I, I, look, to Jackie's point, you know, I, I think one way to approach this is for one of the members of this board to basically form a committee, it can't be more than one member, cause then otherwise it's an illegal meeting, the board is like, well, form a committee with other participants, both from the general public and obviously from these guys who have experience, to start looking at where this might need to go. You know, it's, I, North Hampton, you mentioned North Hampton, North Hampton's been trying to do this now for fifteen years.
Tell me.
Yeah, fifteen, um, it is a nine million dollar project there. Well, nine million of tax, of, of their tax.
Unpayable.
Right, and it'll probably hit the highest when it's all said and done. You know, it, to your point, something like this will be the largest investment of the town since water and sewer. And water and sewer was down a hundred, you know, almost a hundred years ago, at least. Was that?
Fifty years.
Fifty, yeah, fifty. So, um, I, I think that's probably the, the way to go here, um, I don't think, you know, the planning board isn't the board to plan this out, I'm sure, I'm certain we want somebody from planning there to participate. But at the end of the day, it probably needs to be joined by somebody on, on this board in conjunction with the Isaiah Center front of us. So, I, I mean, I think that's, if, if we want to start that process, that's probably what we need to do.
I'll take that on.
Great. Alright.
I got one more question.
Have a. It's, it's, it's public safety night.
Have you heard anything about multiple calls for the Department of Response?
With multiple?
Our?
Yeah.
And the only calls viable would go through nine one one.
The only call viable. So, if somebody's using our old number, which is about a service bag, when we, when we put that out, when we transferred to Rocky yet, direct?
Yeah.
Then it's not going anywhere, then it's gonna be like a seven, seven, eight, three, two, one, something.
When you went to Rocky yet, about eight years ago?
We had, we had, it was an emergency number that went to, uh, mutual organization, Newmarket. Kinda prior to me, I don't know, I mean, I was back there for a while, it would be a little long time ago, so. Uh, the only way that would happen, if nine one one, if they see the, or if they call them, you might be direct, I mean, you know, what numbers are called? Now, we'll pick one and see.
Well, that's what.
No, that's not even listed.
This one.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, they'll, they'll say, they'll do numbers three. No, I mean, you know, again, you, you speak there about getting our evacuation, but it's probably side of it. If people don't call nine one one now, I don't know, I'm sorry, but, you get the emergency call, I don't know. Do I use it? No, I don't wanna deal with that, I, I call this extra, I can say things you guys, right? But, you know, have we had Newmarket community to tell us? Absolutely.
Really?
Yeah, I just had it recently, dude.
Yeah, right, right.
And I had to cry, well, they, they, they told themselves, and it's just, okay, let's have ambulance call.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but they, they.
They didn't let you guys know that?
No, they didn't.
Alright, so.
Yeah, they, they were suspect, they're going to. I've never, uh, I don't know, there would be notice, there would, that would be impossible to happen if they got a hold of an individual. And they call the fire station, you're gonna call there, guaranteed, well, I'm gonna answer, there's nobody there. If we have a protocol, if we don't have anybody sign on in three minutes, they reach out, they have two minutes after that, nobody's signed on, it's a beauty. And depends on what section of town it is, where it's Exodus, and you know, if it's a, if it's a report of fire, we have automatics. If we have a report of fire, you can bring out Exodus and deny it, you know, along with us. So we have mutual agreements, you know, in protocol, if somebody doesn't sign on, then, you know, there's not a downtown.
So if nobody, if nobody answered within five minutes, it goes out to the other?
Yeah, and it's actually, sometimes it would be nicer if they give us five minutes. They're, they're pretty quick, they, you know. I get in the middle, and I, I can get up out of bed, and I can't hit the front door, and I'm like, would you give me a break? I'm sixty and old, I gotta get out. So, look, you know, sometimes it drives me crazy, I was good, you know, to watch it, but I.
Oh, my sight, yeah.
You know, I, I mean, I mean, they may know, especially at the ambulance, Newmarket has shown a couple times, they'll reach out, they go, and Exodus, you know. I don't want to go another, another on-call volunteer, make sure that it's, you know, some time. But I don't know, maybe, I would be interested if you heard any, um, because we don't, I've never, never heard of it.
One more question is my last one, I think. So, after we had that battery issue in the center, is the thyroidium back in the service as a viable alarm system in town, calling for it?
Yes, but not as a Saturday afternoon test.
So, it's, it'll still be functional yet, and it'll still be available to tell them for.
Yes.
Part of, I'm not doing it on Saturday test, I can't.
I cannot, I.
Is that a local decision or is it state?
If that.
I'm heading to the public.
It's a day.
Pretty urgent.
But he can't, he can't do that.
He's got a decided issues in the, even when he's losing on Saturday.
But he can't do that, okay?
Can't invite him.
I, I just, choose your balance, it's what I, you know, I mean.
How am I gonna know when it's twelve thirty on a Saturday?
Exactly. And everybody said there, doesn't, don't you set your phone?
What's really confusing, this is a Monday at six thirty, where it goes off.
Yes, that's, it's really odd.
Yeah, but again, again, so.
Why is the thyroid going on?
I was on a super call, and I'm like, I gotta go, I should, something's been going on, I should call, I'm like. I think I walked in, I'm like, you set that off, I said, how did you set that off? Yes, it is either the local, we can't even look, but, uh.
He's got a, he has to set it off, that's all.
Oh, you don't, you can't set it off down below? It's a, it's a great way to tell them, the country now, I mean, that's a way to tell them, whatever. You hear that thing also, like.
Are you guys all okay starting, um, something after the election? After elections are done?
Sure.
Start with the other thing.
Okay, we set up the garage on hall.
Any other questions?
Well, what was the police department on facility?
Uh, you got so close.
Say that. Once again.
I thought I was gonna get you.
He's done, he was gonna suck up all the.
I think you busted it.
It's been a long time, other than with Nate, it's been a long time since we've fired, had a relationship. And I really, I, I think it's very important, and, uh, you know, Nate was building that, I wouldn't say that for Nate, but there was a long time that we were like, passing.
Oil and water?
Oil and water, it's, it's really nice to be able to work, work with these guys.
I think it's smart to be, how to plan and move forward.
They've been changing the doors and proof, just like that, oh, that white thing? Yeah, but.
Maybe.
He's done a good job. Give him O D O.
Do you have like an approximate, you know, depth of like, mountain, like square footage?
You put me on the spot.
I know.
About any research. Um, you have to left the election to figure it out, but, um, it's wise to do the research, maybe the plan, so you're on a piece mail, and if you, if you're gonna do it, then, you know, if you plan it right, then, um, I, I would be willing to sit here and give you a number of square footage right now.
Okay.
Uh, because there's a lot of things, obviously, he's had those, uh, deckable, um, square footage, a lot of, well, the safety complex, um, there's a lot of common areas to share, which, you know, we don't have that much scrutiny, we have two separate buildings, so, um, there's a lot of shit at space, I just don't know where the fire department had their square footage. As I said, you know, E O C is gonna be working to this, because obviously, apparently, E O C, um, is, uh, for fire stations as well, so. Uh, I would have to look at what the fire department has, and then look to see what we need.
Do you know what you're in about right now?
Six hundred, six.
I was gonna say, six, six to seven hundred.
It's all right.
Probably do if I can.
It's a high quality of square footage.
Well, it's gonna be two hundred fifty five.
Oh, no kidding, wait, it tripled, it tripled the space I had, you guys should have seen the space that was before. No, but I, I think to a point, it's good discussion, so I'd say, um, moving forward, I'll, I'll do with this town, so, it's a lot of history, I'm not familiar, but I'm learning quickly. Um, speaking to, to Pete Buxton and stuff like that, so, you know, uh, moving forward, you know, have a discussion. Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
You can get these guys to fight for it, you know, that's one of the things, just throw out, like, one of the things thrown out is, uh, a lot of departments are going to qualify a police, qualify a fire, qualify. That, and across county, yeah.
Yep.
So think about, counties, you know, the county by, uh, you know, what's, uh, that's what you have. County on by.
You never see it.
No, you didn't.
You don't know, so, yeah.
Go back to the fire trips point, about working together, Chief and I work, came from departments that were very close with our fire department, so, it's important, we always have that relationship as well, so. It's been, uh, been a very relationship so far with, with the F T years.
Were you with Walton and Ryan, did they have any of those conversations?
Uh, Rye's building was just over three million dollars twenty years ago. Is that three or maybe three and a half, something like that?
And I was agreeing with Mr. Ben. I don't want to date quietly, but the building itself, through phases, the first phase was six hundred thousand, and then twenty, probably. Probably, I mean, that was really on second floor, finishing it, doing it self, so, but that was true.
King said, seven.
King said, yeah, yeah, new complex, yeah.
Instead of public safety, custom, fire, or.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not a safety complex, it's just a part.
Was it on marble, was it on marble floor?
No, it's, no, you know what it is, I think, and I know, I know the story of North Hampton, it's, there were coroners that come down. From, you know, from the state, it's well, it's federal in terms of, you have to have X and Y and Z, even though, depending on the size of the town, and, you know, the size of the, of the departments, whether it's police or fire. Now, some of these things are just, they're not necessary, they're, it's, it becomes a luxury, but it's a mandated luxury, and it just jacks these prices up enormously.
Exodus was fourteen, I mean, police stations, bike substation, you know, but it was, uh, fourteen, we had a whole place.
Right, the, the one, the one downtown.
They were critically involved, something.
Did you say if that's for Exodus?
Yeah.
North Hampton, North Hampton, I mean, they, they were fifteen years, they, I, I.
Well, can hold it down three times?
Oh, yeah, but I mean, those fire departments worked in school.
Oh, no, no, no.
That place was.
Falling down right now?
Yeah.
I, I know.
It was, no, that is, it was, we was the older one, and the sewer was coming up out of the.
What shot clean was, in the, they, they, they rebuilt that library before they did the city.
Yeah.
Exodus got a library, and additionally, a library, before they got the fire station on there. With, that, that old, it was, the old scene was falling down around us, it was, it was awful.
Okay, thank you guys, I feel it is your time. Alright, that's a real business. It's a real business. We have a big, a real one, we voted on this. We just need to sign. Um, we have a veteran's tax credit? I'll take a quick look at that. Any questions, comments about the application for veterans tax credit? I'll make a motion to accept the application for the veterans tax credit force.
Second.
Um, so, um, the trust fund transfer, so we had to have worked on our furnace and Donna, kudos to Donna Wood, she discovered that there's a town hall fund that was formed back in nineteen ninety-eight that had funds in it specifically for maintenance of town hall. And, um, this seemed to be a good way to utilize these funds. And so she's looking for approval from the select board to utilize these funds for the eighteen hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents used to.
Any reason why it's coming out of that fund but not building in?
Uh, I think she was, I think she was looking to basically try to preserve budget wise and I wasn't aware that we had this, this fund was just sitting there. It hadn't, hasn't been used in some time. Um, and she thought this was a good utilization of, without, this early in the year, tap the operating.
What's the money in the sidewalk fund?
What's that?
Sidewalk.
Um, that's, so the town raised a bunch of money for sidewalks, specifically for sidewalks. Um, there are phases of sidewalks in the master plan. And it, it, there's actually some of them that, in, in the update master plan, that we're moving like some segments that we're not gonna do sidewalks on, but extending more sidewalks, like between Meadow and Old Lee, I think has been added, um, stuff like that. Um, but it, it, there's not enough of the sidewalk fund to do any of this, we, the town will have to go and do it, but it's basically, you know, the plan is, if we're gonna do sidewalks, these are what it's for. The town put a bunch of money into sidewalk fund, they did the sidewalk up between, you know, the corner here and Meadow, with school in Meadow, that's where that money came from. They utilized all of it, I think. So that's what's your big advantage, remainder is. Yeah, did twenty thousand in there? Twenty-two, yeah, that sounds right. Doesn't get to my sidewalk anymore. Um, any other questions about the request to utilize the town hall funds?
No.
The select board are the agents of the fund, so we can authorize this, we don't do it to the town for expenditure. I'll make a motion to have Donna utilize the town hall fund to pay for the furnace maintenance.
I'll second.
Second by Jackie, on favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great, thank you. All right. One other item before we get to minutes in March dates. Just on the public record, as we had two timely matters that came up between last meeting and this meeting, just to get it on public record, and we'll include the emails in the minutes for this meeting as public record. But the first one was to address a concern that Selph had about a tree that had come down at the end of Old Lee, impairing their access. This was when we had the storm and trees and branches all over town went down. Um, Selph needed, um, permission from the town to be able to go and address that, which we provided, the board approved and provided Selph that access to, to take care of that issue. And then, um, since our last meeting, Chief Young came, requested, informed the board that he had an employee to fill the opening position now that Lisa is leaving. Um, and he wanted a, to be able to give them a conditional offer, which, given the current labor environment, we thought it was prudent to move as quickly as possible to do so. And the email provided Chief Young with that approval, so that he could start the process of hiring that employee. Uh, the board still has to vote on whoever that is, after the chief has done the background and everything else, given the position in the, in the, that took place in between meetings. And again, we'll attach those minutes, those emails to tonight's meeting minutes if anybody wants to review that. All right, I just want it on, on record. So with that, we have February sixth minutes. Um, I have one recommended edit, so third paragraph where Chief Young informed the board the electronic filing of the equitable sharing agreement.
Oh, yes.
Um, I, I would like to add a line at the end of the paragraph that says, the board recommended that Chief Young inform the board before any final approvals of a equitable sharing agreement take place in the future. I think it's important to get that on record, so.
Okay.
Especially if there's a new chief, he knows that the board has addressed this before. Any other changes, comments, questions? I'll make a motion to accept the Tuesday, February sixth minute meetings as meant.
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. Uh, let's look at March, if we can.
Um, you have minutes.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four that you guys took.
Oh, shoot. I, I know, I'm with me, and to be honest, I totally forgot to go, do you wanna, we'll do those at the next meeting?
Okay.
I know that you wanted to wait on it, I apologize, I totally forgot about that. That's my bad. Let's look at March calendar. So elections are on the fourteenth. Um, are we, we doing the candidate's form on the sixth?
Eighth.
Eighth? Thank you. I just wanna make that notation.
Oh, I can tell you right now that Jane will not be available that day.
For the eighth?
Yes.
Um, do you know what day she is available?
Uh, she just said not the seventh or the eighth of that.
Okay, I'll, I'll have Sue reach out to her, but it'll, it'll probably be like something that week, so we'll, we'll try to figure that out then. Uh, but the elections are on the fourteenth. Um, I would suggest the seventh and the twenty-first, unless those dates don't work for people. Seventh and twenty-first?
If I'm here, I will be here.
Which day?
On the twenty-first.
Oh, okay, are you gone that week?
Yeah, I'm gone nineteen to eighteen through twenty-three.
Okay, you want to shoot for the twenty-eighth then? Are you okay with the twenty-eighth? Great, all right, let's, let's pencil on the twenty-eighth then. Okay. Anything else? Public safety discussion, meeting of the, of the year. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-one P M. Second by Hokey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Um, before you guys show up, there's a couple manifests, so.